And if I could have the city clerk do the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor Protem, do we have a pastor, minister, bishop in Pastor Greg? Thank you.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this new day. Thank you for everybody here. I'm going to say that we're grateful, God, that you've made us to begin with and that we've been in your mind even before the world began. And we're here because you want all of us here. And we're grateful, Father, there's an election coming up, there's difficulties and personalities and issues and hardships for everybody going through this. So we just pray a special blessing on this election cycle here and in the greater United States. It's tough, Father, you asked us to pray for people in authority, especially when they're going through elections. And so for everybody here that dies, Father, bless them, we pray. And as they move towards getting their message out and getting voters to vote for them, that they'd be at peace as well, knowing that they're doing their best and they want to see the city grow. Same thing we pray, Father, for the United States. May good things come from this election cycle this year, we pray. And I ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Everyone stand up. Are there any veterans in the house? Any veterans? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature, under God, indivisible, with the right to justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do? Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning.
Here.
Mayor Vergas.
And now we like to open oral communications. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines of oral communication.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Pat D.
Pat Donaldson.
Okay, sorry, it just says Pat D.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, everyone. This is Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I have three announcements. Number one is our golf tournament is next month on the 30th, September 30th, at Rio Hondo. And so far, we're doing really good. So I hope that there's more people that can sponsor. And if you can't play golf, at least you can come to the dinner. Then Thursday, this Thursday, August 29th, we are giving out 200 backpacks with everything in to Corum Bloom Elementary School. So you can be there this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. We sure would appreciate it. And then three is because of the backpack, and then we have a committee meeting for the golf tournament. I'm not going to have a mixer this month. So this Thursday, we will not have our mixer. We'll wait till next month. And now I have two new chamber members, and I'd like to introduce one at a time. And they'll get up and speak and tell you what they're about. Bernice, would you like to come first?
Good evening, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Bernice Conley, and I've recently joined the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a retired employee of U.S. Customs and Border Protection, the LA Long Beach Seaport. As all of you know, that's the largest seaport in the country. I was second-in-command of that seaport as the Assistant Port Director and oversaw over 600 officers. I retired in December of 2022 to pursue another career, and it's a career in helping individuals, families, and communities develop. And I'm currently studying through the Hypnosis Motivational Institute in Tarzana, California, to obtain a degree in mind-body psychology. Hypnosis is probably one of the most misunderstood modalities. It's often associated with stage hypnosis, having people act like a duck, quack like a duck, and doing all kinds of crazy things. But it's actually one of the most powerful tools to help individuals on a spiritual, emotional, psychological level. And that helps to build better businesses, families, and communities once the subconscious mind is reached. So that's what I'd like to present. I will be instituting or implementing a business. And I live in Hawthorne, or actually, I live in Wiseburn, which is the unincorporated part of the county, but I'm associated with the city of Hawthorne, and would like to see this community grow, to see businesses grow, as well as education within the community to be more familiar with this fantastic modality to help people. Thank you for having me here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I would like to have Ryan come up here, who owns Ziggy's. Everyone knows where Ziggy's is at.
Yay!
I was gonna say, that's a lot to follow right there. I just wanted to welcome every, or welcome myself, I guess. I actually am born and raised in the city of Hawthorne, grew up walking to the Taco Bell after swimming. When that property came available, it was something we were eyeballing for a while. We're finally able to put all the pieces together and happy to announce that we have now officially been open for two months. Business has been steadily growing. We're located at 4744 West El Segundo Boulevard, right across the Catty Corner to the Hawthorne High School. It's been an honor to serve the community so far. We've had such good positive feedback from all the residents that are able to walk by, come by, stop by on their way to school or work. We offer a lot of alternatives to some of the other coffee concepts that are around. My sister and I are partners on this project, and as a franchise, you know, it's sometimes lost that you think of it as big business. But we have a small business owned and operated by locals and a local family, and we're just honored to be part of the city, part of this community, and hopefully sponsoring more schools, sports, anything. We're open-minded, open to any prospects, and happy to be a part of the chamber and happy, really, to be a part of this city. So please support us, please keep coming by. We love the community. Our community loves us. So, thank you.
Thank you. We love your hours.
Oh, that's also, too, our hours. We are actually open earliest of any of the stores around. We open at 4:30 a.m. for you early risers that are on your way to whatever you may be doing that early. 4:30 a.m. Monday through Friday to 10 p.m. And on the weekends, we're open from 6:00 to 10 p.m. So, please stop by.
Thank you for saying that, because when you can't sleep, guess what? 4:30 is a great time to go for coffee.
And, you know, we have a lot of people that are working in many different industries, airport, military. So we're trying to accommodate people at a little bit earlier hour.
If you need help in the kitchen.
And the police force. I catch you guys there all the time.
I was gonna say, if you need help in the kitchen, I'd love to learn how to make the banana chocolate chip bread.
Ooh, that's a secret.
Thank you.
And right now is pumpkin season, so stop on by.
That's right. I had my first pumpkin this week. Yep.
Thank you.
The latte.
Thank you.
Pumpkin latte.
Rap Williams, please.
Hello, Mayor Protem and City Council. Actually, I wanted to bring some flowers today. I went to the Shakespeare in the Park a couple Saturdays ago and enjoyed myself. I thought it was a great rendition of Much Ado About Nothing. And I really enjoyed it. Really enjoyed how we have some of the cleanest parks and, you know, our parks and our, you know, there are people who work for the city that really keep it nice and clean, and the police department keeps it nice and safe as well. Follow that up, my wife and I went to Langer's yesterday, and we decided to go through a walk in MacArthur Park, and it's just kind of just sad to see the state that it's fallen into. So it's really good to appreciate the parks that you have in your own city. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Michael Migo.
Hello. Yeah, Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. Yeah, you got a really good microphone system here. RE, housing affordable and homeless in the cities. Money, addictions, and other issues seem to be at the forefront of many of the folks that are out there that seem to be trying to get their life back together. Federal, state, county, and local policies and taxes and so forth are causing the high cost of living. Tiny homes in the 250 square foot to 500 square foot size and standard-sized homes should be the ones that are being built in our city versus apartment buildings. Just like packing people to like sardines, you know, and, because I remember being in New York, you know, apartments all over the place. You know, developers get rich with high-density residential construction. And I might add that I'm really kind of taken back by the SB 9, SB 10, you know, state taking, you know, county and local authority away in regards to what's best for their communities. And that affects the quality of life. Americans, American Indians have a saying that some people speak with forked tongue. Hidden agendas versus honest plans. Actions speak louder than words. Second item, elections in our city, November the 5th. While there are many issues that concern the people of Hawthorne, there is a recurring expression about the one, the Hawthorne Mall, we need to work on making that a shopping, dining, relaxing, entertaining, multiple-purpose place over there. You know, adaptive reuse, new inside and outside. Second, RFK Hospital with a full range of healthcare services. We need to do a lot of outreach and make that happen. Sentinel can't handle it all. We can't deal with, you know, the Gardena Memorial. Torrance, even with our two hospitals, it is going to come a day when we're going to be so overwhelmed that, and we already are to some extent. So candidates for council and mayor must advocate for these things in their campaigns. For a dynamic and vibrant downtown area of the city that will become a real destination point in Los Angeles County. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Is there any?
There is a letter that was written. I received an email from Jesús Villalpando. I will leave this in the clerk's office for anyone who wants to come and review the email, because I don't read public comments. If they email it, I'll just leave it for inspection in the clerk's office. So if anyone's interested, there is a letter that was sent to me earlier today, and it will be in the clerk's office for inspection.
Thank you. If there's anyone wishing to address these bodies, please form a line at the podium.
Good evening. Mo Awadala, president of the Kiwanis Club in Hawthorne. So real quick, a couple of Sundays back, I saw a woman ripping down a political sign that belonged to a current council member. I quickly took out my phone and started recording her. When I approached her, she clearly said, "Leave me alone, none of your business. I need to go make some money." Didn't really know what that meant. Then I realized four days ago, prior to that, my banner and my signs were taken down. Just one thing, when you're stealing, when you're stealing the candidate's signs, just remember, that's a lot of money put into those signs. Last week, I received a phone call from an owner of a nearby shopping center that had gave me permission to put one of my banners on his property. Hey, Mo, I just received a call from John Doe, and he said it's illegal to put any type of political banners on properties. So can you please remove it? Sure. I went and removed it. Just one thing here. The right of a property owner to post signs representing their political beliefs is one that is rooted in the First Amendment, which protects every citizen's right to freedom of expression. I know who's behind this, but I'm not going to go on their level. So just please, I'm asking you right now in front of everyone, do not touch my signs, do not touch my banners, and stop trying to convince my political campaign manager to not represent me and represent someone else. It's not working. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If there is no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed. So ordered. We're going to take a recess to step outside to take a picture in front of our truck with the logo.
How long of a recess?
Thank you, Mo, for coming up. Thank you for coming up and saying that. I'm going to speak a little bit more about that later. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five minutes?
Yep.
We're back from recess at 6:32 PM. City Clerk, consent calendar, please.
Madam Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. There are items one through four for your consideration and approval. Item one, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item two, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for August 27, 2024. Item three, resolution number 8484, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a code of conduct for all city-sponsored events. Item four, resolution number 8482, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, rescinding resolutions number 8175, 8207, 8216, 8266, and proclaiming the termination of the local emergency due to COVID-19 under Government Code Section 8630D for adoption.
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote. A moment.
The votes are in. The voting reflects council voting yes.
Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, please proceed with item five.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft substantial amendment to the 2024-2025 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? If not, I declare the hearing closed. So ordered. Sorry.
I just wanted to... This is the new CDBG housing funds for 25? Fiscal year 25? Okay. Thank you.
You want to tell me to proceed with this?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and move. It basically is asking for... If there's anyone else that wants to speak, she already closed it out, right? So I'll make a motion on item number five. If I could get a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote. The votes are in. The voting reflects council voting yes.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with our second public hearing. Item number six.
Item six, now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of resolution 8481, authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds, series 2024.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic? If not, I declare this hearing closed. So ordered. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution 8481 into the record.
Resolution number 8481, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the issuance of the Hawthorne Public Financing Authority Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2024, and making a finding of significant public benefit in connection therewith, authorizing the city's execution and delivery of related documents and taking related actions for adoption.
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects council voting... The voting reflects council voting yes.
May I have the city manager's consent calendar?
You have one ordinance, right? Number seven?
City manager's consent calendar. Item eight, construction of speed humps on Eucalyptus Avenue from...
Ms. Hunter, can you wait for a minute, please?
Yes.
There is an ordinance, number seven, ordinance number 2253.
I don't have it on here.
It's on my screen.
Yes, it's not on the... It's not on here.
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda, it's number seven.
Number seven.
Second reading of ordinance number 2253.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please read ordinance number seven on the city manager's consent calendar?
Sorry, it's not on the city manager consent calendar. It's the second reading of the ordinance itself. Ordinance is number 2253 for council to discuss and to vote on.
Can I read it? Yes. Okay, thank you, City Clerk, with your permission. It's ordinance number seven, ordinance number 2253, second reading and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter 17.04, 17.32, and 17.34 to update the definitions of automobile repair and the zones within which they are permitted. Motion to adopt.
I move. Second.
Please vote. The votes are in. The voting reflects... Mr. Montero?
I did the vote.
The voting reflects council voting yes.
City Clerk, can you please read the city manager's consent calendar?
Item eight, construction of speed humps on Eucalyptus Avenue from 118th Street to 120th Street. Item nine, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended June 30, 2024. Item 10, progress payment number 13 in the amount of $71,174 due to Eleknor Belco Electric of Chino, California, for Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, project number 21-06. Item 11, progress payment number three in the amount of $218,210.92 due to Best Contracting Services Incorporated of Gardena, California, for Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement, project number 23-03. Item 12, progress payment number six in the amount of $1,102,849.21 due to Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. of Orange, California, for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties, 2023, project number 23-09. Item 13, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Nino &amp; More for evaluation of airport pavement strength for the Hawthorne Municipal Airport, HHR, in Hawthorne, California. Item 14, a side letter agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association Part Time, HMEA-PT, amending the memorandum of understanding. Madam Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items eight through 14?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects council voting yes.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the city attorney's consent calendar? I'm sorry. Next, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects you have item 15 on the city attorney's consent calendar. Please proceed by introducing it into the record.
Item 15, claim for physical assault and property damage by Vincent Rand Littlejohn. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim of Vincent Rand Littlejohn. Madam Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 15?
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
I'll step in.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for helping out. At this time, I will recess the city council meeting and call to order the Public Financing Authority with all members present. Madam Secretary, the resolution, please.
Resolution number 12, a resolution of the Hawthorne Public Financing Authority, authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of leased revenue bonds, series 2024, authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture and other documents, and taking related actions for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects chair and the governing body voting yes.
So I think that's it. Let me go off elected officials' reports? Okay, wow.
Did you adjourn the Public Financing Authority?
Yeah, no. If there's nothing further, under the Public Financing Authority, I will adjourn the Public Financing Authority and call back to order the city council meeting with all members present. We have elected officials' reports and recommendations. If we can begin with the city treasurer, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Glad to see you all here. I do not have anything at present. Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. Looks like we're going to get out of here very early tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Wanted to offer my condolences to the Balboa family. I... My heart goes out to you, to you all. Also wanted to say it was a great event at the state of the city. Had a great time. Von Norris, our city manager, is just amazing. It was beautiful. Everything was aesthetically gorgeous, very nice, the way things flowed. The food was amazing. It was really, really a good time, and it really felt good. I almost didn't make it that day because I unfortunately had to put my dog down that day. So I put my dog down and then came to the state of the city. But that was definitely refreshing. It made me feel a lot better just to be in the company of everyone. Everyone was having a good time, so I really did appreciate that. Also wanted to say I really did enjoy the Shakespeare in the Park. That was a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to seeing more of that, and that is pretty much it for me. Also, again, if anyone would like to inspect any documents, please feel free to come to the clerk's office, and I look forward to seeing you all soon.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making your voices heard, communicating your concerns, and just educating us about what's happening in our community. I want to thank our staff for your hard work and your contribution to the community, and of course, our police department. Speaking about the state of the city, it definitely was a great opportunity to see the fruits of the labor of the entire city council as well as our staff, and just definitely want to commend everybody for your contribution to the success of our city over the last number of years. And it's great, of course, always spend time with the community and spend time with all the city staff, and everybody does business with us. And so it was awesome to do that. And food was good. Shakespeare in the Park, that was something that came from a Hawthorne resident, right? Who's a thespian and came to the Holly Park Neighborhood Association wanting to bring that experience to our city. And I was happy to support it and had just such a great time. I was able to attend the first presentation, the first showing of it, which was on Friday, and had such a great time. I'm a big fan of the arts, big fan of theater. Go to Patentage's many times throughout the course of the year. So it was great that we had that, and it looks like we had a really good showing that first day. I hope it was the case the rest of the weekend. But I know I got a lot of great positive feedback and would love to bring them back in the future and maybe even other parts of the city of Hawthorne. Mr. City Manager, I want to give you a directive regarding our property on Corridary. I understand that we recently issued a RFP for a new development project there, and I had a few interested parties who wanted to try to pursue that reach out to me and say that they weren't informed of that RFP being issued. So I wanted to ask if we can kind of reissue that RFP and make it a little bit more public so anybody who has an interest in trying to pursue that can take advantage of that opportunity and submit an interest and put together a proposal for that, maybe even put it on our website, just make it as public as possible. And if we can put on, maybe the next council meeting to discuss two things. One, the rules or legalities of posting banners on businesses for those that are campaigning. And also kind of discuss the appointment process for our commissions. So these are a couple of topics that seems to be some confusion about out in the community. So obviously, we need to put this on the agenda so we can have a conversation about it. And that's all. I look forward to seeing you guys at all the coming events, community events, candidates' forums, all that good stuff. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So thank you all the staff and the great people of the City of Good Neighbors. First, I have to say, the state of the city, I want all the committee members that are here to stand up, please. All the committee that put the state of the city together. Come on, Von, you have to stand up, too. Okay, let's hear that. Let's give them a round of applause.
Nice work.
Because I have to say, job well done. It was a beautiful event, and the location, the lab, you know, to highlight the business, so it was fantastic. Thank you, Von, for that idea. And it was a good... It was a good event, so thank you for that. It was fantastic. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for delivering the state of the city. I want to say again that finally, you know, we have our first grand open of one of the cannabises in the City of Hawthorne. And for those of you that were critical of it, so I would say just go by and do a visit, and you'll see how that store is a very authentic and beautiful store. It looks like an Apple store. So I would say, you know, go there and check it out, because...
Excuse me, people in the audience, please, if you agree or disagree with anything you're saying, just keep it to yourself, or else you'll be asked to leave. Continue if you want to start again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because as you understand, that, you know, the people of Hawthorne voted twice for us to put cannabis sales in the City of Hawthorne. So I hope that we're going to get potential sales revenue and tax revenue coming to the city, and that money is going to go to our general fund that's going to bring more support for our staff, for our police department, for our public work. So that money is going to be well spent. So thank you. And like I said, it's about time that we bring more revenue for the City of Hawthorne. Like, again, like my colleague said, the Shakespeare in the Park, it was a beautiful event that would happen on the 16th of August. So we did enjoy the play. So it was about two hours of play, so it was fantastic. And the weather was perfect. So thank you for that. Let me see, let me see. Okay, so basically, what I want to mention that... Oh, the other thing that I want to mention that thank you for those who show up for the Lions Club vision screening and glass giveaway. So it was, you know, hundreds of people there, and I believe about 54 people received free glasses. So thank you for participating in that event. And just FYI, tonight, we were supposed to have earthquake resource presentation from the state of California, but they postponed it because the people have to travel from Sacramento to come to Hawthorne. So they're going to figure it out, how to maybe to do it the next meeting on the 24th of September. Okay? So, yeah, so just keep in mind that it's coming. And I would like, uh, Mr. Mayor, again, to, um, oh, actually, I wanna say thank you to Public Works, Agbar, and Selena for putting the speed humps on, uh, Yoculpa Street from 120 to 118. I appreciate that, because like, that is a school route for a lot of kids, so thank you for that. And if we could adjourn this meeting in memory of Ms. Balboa's mom, she was a beautiful, lovely, smart lady all the time, so my deepest condolences goes to your family, Ms. Balboa. So, and a good night.
Okay. Councilwoman Angie Reese English, please.
Thank you. To the Balboa family, this is news to me. I'm just learning, so my deepest condolences. I just wanna piggyback on some things that were just mentioned here for, especially the grand opening of our first cannabis store, and there's five more coming. Just an FYI, so that everyone's informed and, and has, um, you know, the information, again, uh, this has been over a three-year process. It was first, um, you know, 2020, put on, uh, the ballot, passed with over 60% of the vote. Fast forward, there was over 22 applicants that applied for a business license, only six were selected, and that was the preference of the City Council to make it, um, that number. With the 22 applicants that applied, there was over five, $500,000 to $600,000 that was made, no refunds. So, the city benefited from ju- just the application process. So, um, again, it's a revenue source, it's something that's been happening in the state of California since 2016. This isn't new. It's up to the cities and the municipalities of their choice to either implement or not. And with that, we took it to the voters in 2020, and there was a decision to do that. So, that's to keep yourself informed. And I, I am so glad that I attended, and it was a great event, and look forward to the businesses contributing to the community in various ways, as the council member mentioned. Uh, I also want to thank, um, the new businesses that are here in Hawthorne, Ziggy's and Ms. Bernice, for your efforts, um, in bringing new business here to the City of Hawthorne. Look forward to, um, working with the Chamber with regards to their upcoming, uh, golf tournament and the backpack giveaway that they are gonna be hosting. Shakespeare in the Park was a great event. Uh, I sat there on a Friday night, uh, definitely need to take a pillow the next time, uh, we go to something like that, uh, but it was a great event, over two hours of, of Shakespeare in the Park, and I was so into it that I kind of like, was like, talking to myself, like, don't get it, you know? But it was all good. I, I really enjoyed it, and, um, thank the North Hawthorne for, uh, the North, excuse me, the Holly, North, what is it? Holly Park for bringing that to us. So, thank you so much. There's also, let's see, a couple of things that made mention. Maxine Waters hosted an event this past Saturday, and Councilmember Montero and myself, uh, stayed the whole entire time, from nine to two o'clock, and that was a long, uh, town hall, and, and, um, uh, President of the Kiwanis, uh, Mr. Mo attended that also. Let me just make mention, there was a standing room only event. This was a standing room only event to discuss the United States Postal Service's delivery of mail and/or not, and the issues there were far and wide, and I wrote them all down, and, uh, the reason I wrote this all down is because in my work, in the professional work of casework, this has been an ongoing issue for years throughout Los Angeles, throughout cities, municipalities, and especially downtown Los Angeles, uh, with the upkeep of, of some of the postal, postal services offices, uh, the delivery of mail or not, again, medicines, um, packages being, you know, open on delivery. It goes on and on and on and on. Even though this is a federal matter, it's not a, a city matter, we still want, you know, you to let us know what's happening, because we are in, in collaboration with Congresswoman Waters' office, and anything that has to do with federal agency, we pass that on to her office and work very well with, uh, Blanca Jimenez, the, the District Director. So, don't be discouraged just because it's a federal issue or any, you know, whether it's a state issue, regardless, we, we know how to, uh, get in contact with representatives from those agencies, so thank you, uh, Congresswoman Waters, for that. That was a really good meeting. I appreciate the fact that, um, there was, made mention a couple of things here. One is the, um... Ending our COVID, uh, order, right? Ending that order. I'm glad that that, uh, finally, uh, was brought up, and we voted on that so that we could move on. But I wanna also make mention, uh, in, in, in that same theme, we have an upcoming CERT, uh, training at the Hawthorne Memorial Center on Saturday, October 26th, uh, November 2nd and November 9th. These are, um, three training sessions from nine to five, and this is a way to get certified to become a CERT member. Uh, if you'd like more information, uh, the best bet is just attending a meeting so that you could get well informed on, as to what they do. And, uh, I'm really pleased that our CERT members that are, are under, uh, Mr. English's authority here in the city, uh, are engaged and are trying to do their best to do outreach in the community so that we could get more members to sign up. It's desperately needed, especially, uh, you know, just recently had an earthquake, and, uh, we don't ever know any other, um, earthly, uh, natural disasters, but, uh, if we could train folks to help, that would be very beneficial to our fire and police. Um, so, I encourage you to, to look into that. And then there's a couple of other events that I wanna mention real quick, and then I'll finish. This, uh, Friday, the car show, right? Our car show this August 30th from two, six to nine PM. I don't know how many cars, uh, folks have called Vaughn to register for that. I hope it's a good number. I hope that, uh, every, uh, you know, this is a family event. I hope all of us can participate and, uh, have a great time this coming Friday with that. And then, really quick, our Senior Center, uh, groundbreaking, uh, council members is Tuesday, September 24th at 10:00 AM. We've been, uh, looking forward to this, um, the seniors are gonna be excited to see that this is a groundbreaking for them, and for those that participate in our city, and then another groundbreaking for the Dodgers, Tuesday, September 10th, at, um, Jim Thorpe Park. But I wanna touch bases real quick on something that was just made mention in public comment, and that has to do with, um, you know, it's campaign season. Again, for those that are not aware, campaign season is 90 days, 90 days in which, uh, campaign material, flyers, banners, uh, yard signs, et cetera, are allowed, are allowed, especially if you're speaking with, uh, property owners and those that are giving you permission to put it up. Don't be discouraged, don't be, uh, panicked, should you be hearing otherwise. It's policy in our books that says for the next 90 days, any candidate can put up on, uh, private property, again, not city property, not city property, private property. And if you're given permission to do that on other businesses, et cetera, you have that ability to do that. And if you're, and if you're being told you're, you can't, you're being intimidated, you're being bullied, and don't fall for those tactics. Um, there, it's been going on with, uh, uh, candidate Mo Walla that's running, and myself. I'm glad that there's businesses that are calling us. I'm glad that there's cameras picking up the people that are doing it. I'm glad that the Police Department now has a sergeant with me working on cases, and, uh, that it, it is being processed. So, uh, this has been going on for a long, long time. Folks have been telling me that, oh, this is just, you know, another day, uh, in the rodeo, not on my time. You know, my time, my dollars, is very expensive, uh, spending thousands of dollars on material and signs, and for me to think that for a minute that this is, uh, condoned, allowed, or permitted, it's totally wrong. And don't, don't allow anybody to do that to you. If you're a candidate, I don't care who you are, don't allow anybody to do that to you, let alone intimidate you. And so with that, when it comes time to asking me what you'd like to do with this individual that stole your signs or, you know, destroyed your signs, prosecute him to the fullest of the law, as far as I'm concerned. So, there's no shame, right? So, it's just like anybody coming to your property, stealing from your porch, if it's a porch bandit, right? If it's property crime, right? So, that's the same way that you run a campaign. It's your property, and don't allow anybody to touch it, let alone take it, or intimidate you. And I'm glad, again, that there's people calling us, they got it on video, and it's not, it just happened again today, okay? So, it's happening, and, um, I look forward, again, uh, the ability to just educate folks, and if you'd like to speak to me one-on-one, I could show you a video, I could show you people, so just feel free to call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Manning?
Uh, I am just learning just now about the passing of her mom. My condolences, but what I will say is that I feel so honored and so blessed that we got to celebrate her Mother's Day. We had an incredible time with her, and to see those smiles, I will definitely share those photos and videos... Sorry. I will definitely share the photos and videos, um, of your mom, 'cause we had an amazing time. So, thank you so much for sharing her with us, and again, my condolences to you. Also, I attended the Shakespeare, um, in the park, and I would have to say that my daughter did Shakespeare for about eight years, so she really understood, um, the play, and I just remember for eight years being bored, so I was not ready or prepared, even wanted to go to, to this event, um, because it brought back memories of those eight years that I had to sit through with her. But I have to tell you that after attending, I laughed so hard, um, and it was so great that I got mad at the character Beatrice. And when I saw her, I actually said to her, "I don't like you." But, you know, it just shows how well she did her job. When you don't like somebody, uh, that's acting, that means they've done their job, and they all did a fabulous job, and I am looking forward to seeing that play, Believe It or Not, again. So, thank you so much, Holly Park, for bringing that to our community. Uh, we need more things like that. It is, it was an amazing experience. Also, I'd like to say thank you to the carpenters who bought out our book exchange. It's on 120th and Venice, where you can go and you can bring a book, um, or you can take a book, and so that was a fabulous, um, event as well, where we had a chance to celebrate, uh, with the carpenters. Uh, we took plenty of pictures, um, and I also had an opportunity to use the, the tool, the, the saw thing. You just push it and it goes zzzzz. So, anyway, that was pretty fun, um, but it's not something that I think I could do for a living. I'd probably tear up everybody's stuff. So, I also wanted to make an announcement that I will not be here at the next council meeting. I will be attending the Black Legislative Caucus, um, in DC, uh, for our next council meeting, so I'm really excited. It's an opportunity to meet all the other, uh, council folks from all over the world, and we convene, and we talk about legislative issues that they're having, um, in their cities, and so I'll be able to converse with them and bring back, uh, information, what works well there and what doesn't work. Um, and then I also get an opportunity to visit, uh, Washington DC and, uh, say hi to our Congresswoman. That is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I wanna start off by thanking and congratulating the North Hawthorne, congratulating the North Hawthorne Community Association on their picnic that they had. I heard it was a great turnout. Uh, members of our, uh, City Council were there, and, uh, the City Treasurer was there. I don't know if the City Clerk might have been there, uh, but there was a great response from the community, so thanks to all those who participated, and, uh, congratulations to them. I wanna thank staff for helping organize the State of the City, so I wanna join my councilmember colleagues in agreeing that this was an awesome presentation, there was just so much good morale, uh, in putting this together, so, uh, yeah, that, it was great, so thank you guys so much. Can we give them a round of applause, uh, once more? And I guess one of the big highlights for myself is the economic success of the city, was the 1,800% increase in our, in our, uh, city's coffers from, in our savings account, our cash fund balance, that we call it, from 5 million back in 2016, all the way to about 95 million today. So, that's a big thing, and a lot of cities around us can't even claim that. Elsa Gundo, you might think, oh, because they have all this aerospace, they might be doing, no, they're having trouble. Torrance as well, has difficulty in balancing their budget. Ingood, you know, some, just because they have SoFi, they run into situations as well, and recently as well. Uh, I think they just got out of the hole when it comes to certain things. So, City of Hawthorne has to, to be able to be successful, and that's a team effort with my councilmember colleague, so, uh, thank you, guys. Mrs. Balboa, I'm sorry to hear that your mom passed, um, and you know that, like, uh, whenever we were around, you know, she hugged each other, kissed a kiss, you know, saludos, and, uh, she was warm, lively, uh, active, she would go to the Senior Center too, and, uh, everywhere you went, she went, right? All the events, she was there with you, and, and your husband, so, uh, it's kinda really sad to know that we're not gonna be able to see her, but, I mean, she's gonna definitely live of forever in our hearts. So, uh, my condolences to you, your family, your daughter, uh, your granddaughter, right, and, uh, the rest of the family members, okay? I have nothing further, but since we're going to go, uh, back into the, into a closed session, we still have that going on? If we can have that moment of silence in honor of, uh, in memory of Mrs. Balboa's mom, please. May she rest in peace. So, uh... Can you read the closed session information? Ms. City Clerk, 17?
Item 17, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956 dot 9D1. Name of case, Kenneth Washington, Kimberly Hagan, Marley Washington versus City of Hawthorne, Atoll, L.A.S.C., case number 22STCV13645.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item 17? See no one. If there are no objections, I'll declare oral communication closed, so ordered. I just wanna congratulate you on that opportunity, uh, Mayor Protem, that you have to be able to go to DC and, uh, congregate with, uh, other like minds, so please do come back and give us whatever information you have. I didn't get to say that during my closing arguments, or discussions. We will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:09 PM. We are in recess. for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:09 PM. We are in recess.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.